Boring, I don't know how Judge Cunningham stays awake. Yeah. Yeah, Mike wasn't going to be here. Mike Cunningham, I mean Mike Cunningham. Oh, well, there's Arnie. Come on, Mike. I'm waiting for you. Welcome, everybody that's here and those that are viewing at home to the St. Charles County Council Meeting of February 25th, 2019. Tonight, we have Pastor Steve Parks from St. Charles Bible Baptist Church. He's going to give the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance is going to be given by Joe Cronin. Everybody, please rise.
Father, we come before you this evening. We thank you for this good day that you've given to us. We thank you, Father, that we have the opportunity to call upon you. Thank you for the opportunity, Lord, that the county gives us to invite you into these proceedings. We ask for your wisdom. Lord, we know that all wisdom comes from you. We are so grateful for the community that you allow us to live in, be a part of. We ask for these that will make decisions and hear from the community, Lord, the propositions, the issues that they'll decide on tonight. We pray, Lord, again, that you will just guide them to make the right decisions for this community. We thank you that you are interested in every aspect of our life. Everywhere that we will invite you, Father, you will be involved. We thank you now that we can come before you in the name of our dear Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Parks. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yeah.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Klinghammer. Councilmember Hammond.
Thank you. Next, we have public comments. It's where the public's invited to come forward and speak on any topic. Once a topic has been arrived upon, we ask that we have three speakers pro and three speakers con. Is there anybody that signed up for public comments?
Okay. Brad Hildebrand.
Good evening. I'm a proud resident, business owner, and also property owner in St. Charles County. I come to you tonight to have you maybe take another look at the fact that St. Charles County should offer the St. Louis County cities of Chesterfield and Wildwood into St. Charles County. A lot of people may not realize it. Matter of fact, even to the point where I have friends of mine that live in Chesterfield, and even at one point in time when I interviewed the mayor of Chesterfield on my radio show, he had no idea that there's part of St. Charles County that's on the other side of the river, making it contiguous to St. Charles County. I think that there's already a lot of commerce that goes from St. Charles County into St. Louis County. A lot of people use Chesterfield Valley as their shopping spot. It would make sense to me to annex that and keep the people out of Chesterfield and Wildwood into the horrendous mess that's going on in St. Louis City and St. Louis County. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next.
John Hancock.
Hi. My name's John Hancock. I live in Chesterfield, so I may be a St. Charles County resident before long.
We'd love to have you, John.
I'm here to testify against the resolution, although I love you guys. I am working for the Better Together effort, and I am compensated in that capacity, for the record. I want to make four quick points. Number one, St. Louis is a mess. We have 113 local governments. We have 89 municipalities, 55 police departments in the last five years, not counting schools. 130 tax increases have been passed in St. Louis. We have 73 municipal courts. We have two judicial circuits, 679 elected officials. We pay 44% more for government in St. Louis than any city in America, and that's city and county. It is a mess. Point two, the plan is not a bailout. The city debt stays in the old city and is paid off by the earnings tax, which decreases a tenth of a percent a year for 10 years. None of the city's debt comes into the new metro city government, so this is not a bailout. In fact, taxes go down for the citizens of St. Louis City and County by half. Half of what we pay in property tax to run county government goes from 41 cents per $100 to 21 cents per $100. It is a tax cut for the people of St. Louis. The metro city will be solvent under this plan in perpetuity. If this passes, St. Louis will be solvent. Three, what are the benefits? $40 million in revenue to the state of Missouri as a result of this. It will reduce the number of taxing entities. It will end the TIF competition between municipalities in St. Louis. There is a chance, a good chance, a high likelihood that the 22nd Judicial Circuit in the city of St. Louis, poof, goes away. That means that unless you're suffering from a really bad case of mesothelioma or you've been using Johnson-Talcum powder for a long time, this is good news. Now, all of a sudden, the judicial pool in St. Louis will be a city of 1.3 million people and not what we have. The city goes poof. If this plan moved St. Louis City into St. Louis County and kept St. Louis City intact, I would oppose it vigorously. That would be a mistake. Under this plan, the city goes poof. Four, why a statewide vote? I would submit to you the following. Right now, the people in your county drive through anywhere from seven to 12 different police departments on their way to the airport every time. That means there are seven to 12 municipal courts where they could pay fines. That goes away under this plan. Also, according to two of the three Republicans elected in all of St. Louis, two out of the three, the alternative they have advocated for this is that the city of St. Louis go into default. If the city of St. Louis goes into default, we pay for it. You pay for it. I would submit that you give your residents an opportunity to make St. Louis solve its own problems rather than go into default. If the people of Grand Rapids had a chance to solve Detroit's problems, they would have appreciated that vote. If you'd like to postpone this and have advocates and adversaries come testify, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock.
Lynn Pagano.
Good evening. My name is Mayor Lynn Pagano, City of St. Peters. Obviously, I'm here disagreeing with the last speaker. I met with, actually, I belong on to the Missouri, United Missouri Mayors for Progress. That's from Kansas City all the way down through St. Louis. They are definitely against this, the constitutional part. They are not against the merger or whatever it is. They actually feel like they should be voting themselves in there. Number two, the metro mayors, that's the ones that I belong to also, same thing. They're all opposed to it. Now, majority of those mayors are St. Louis County. Do they have a reason to be opposed to it? Most probably. But the thing of it is, I did some research on this, and believe me, I'm no lawyer, no nothing. I'm not a lawyer like Steve or anything, but I did some research today, and there was nowhere in the Constitution that said the whole state had to vote for the approval of St. Louis City or St. Louis County to become a county. It was the people themselves that voted on this. Now, the most interesting thing is, St. Louis County government was, well, they're opposed to the merger, but the thing of it is, I'm here to say, St. Peters, St. Charles County, we got no business voting and saying to these people, oh, yeah, we're going to take your rights away. We're going to tell you, get rid of the courts, do this and that. That's wrong, gentlemen. I don't even know how in the world they came up with that, but I respect everyone's views on it, but this is the thoughts from quite a few mayors of this state of Missouri. Most probably, there's a lot of voices throughout the different areas about this issue, but that's all it is, and it's really nice seeing all of you guys. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next.
Arnie Deanhoff.
Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanhoff, public advocate and resident. First of all, I'm opposed to you passing Resolution 1901. You know, we should stay out of it. It's a plan that you should cast, you should allow us to cast our vote at the ballot box. I don't want you to push your personal opinion on our 435,000 county residents. I say that you stay out of it. I say that you vote down Resolution 1901. You have no business in this issue whatsoever. The second issue is, I'd like you to vote down Bill Number 4684 and proposed substitute Bill 4684. It deals with enabling St. Charles County to join the Show Me Pace Institute, I guess. In parentheses, a Rex Singfeld makes somebody rich, some political pals across the state, because it prides upon residents in terms of utility of hot water tank heaters, heating and air conditioning units with high interest rates. It prides upon them by giving them another loan and a possible way of rich people to take the houses of people that don't know the contracts that they're getting involved in. This is a Rex Singfeld-spirited, established thing that he got passed through the legislature, and I ask that you vote it down. It makes no sense for our taxpayers. We don't want our citizens to be taken advantage here in St. Charles County. What the county executive and Joe Brazel, the county councilman from District Two, did to Gary Griffin, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, is atrocious, unethical, unprofessional, and sickening, in my opinion. You railroaded this long-term person who has given volunteerism to our county and has been the steward of our county government. This is the bottom-of-the-barrel scum stunt of politics all over our water issue and him for filing for the Water Board of District Two, Subdistrict Five. It's pay-to-play politics. Mr. Elman slowly talked about this since August and slowly did in Mr. Griffin, which is unconscionable. There needs to be change, and I'm here to make sure that ethics is instilled in St. Charles County. At last Wednesday's meeting in the Planning and Zoning Commission, your commission yielded the absentee employee, Debbie Sales, was a no-show. So you appointed somebody at the last meeting, but she didn't show up to her first appointment. Play-to-play politics where Steve Elman's wife goes to a circuit judge and do his chambers and demands that his son's drug charges be dropped and that his warrant be withheld.
Mr. Chairman. This, these accusations.
It was a security breach in the courthouse.
This is not his platform, okay?
Detrimented public safety of the county courthouse.
He says stuff that's not true. He's 100% wrong 100% of the time.
It's a play to play politics. Hiring a three lobbyist friend, Steve Elman, were former members of the legislature.
You cannot.
Mr. Deanhoff, why don't you excuse me, but I have the floor.
No, he just cut through the wire. You don't even know, you have no 15. You're not even talking about me.
I will testify in the court of law. It is a fact.
Come to order. Mr. Deanhoff, thank you.
Can I have my 30 seconds back, please?
No, you cannot.
Mr. Deanhoff, your time was up. Thank you.
He's the chairman. He controls the meeting. May I please have my 30 seconds back?
Mr. Deanhoff, please have a seat.
Yes or no?
Did he have 30 seconds?
No.
No.
They were both talking at the same time.
Time went off, so I'm sorry, Arnie.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, your time did go off.
I can't hear with the policeman's voice.
Your time did go off.
He controls the meeting. Can I have the 30 seconds?
No, they said your time was up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But thank you for coming.
I'll be back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I have no more speaker cards.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay, with that, we go on to...
Mr. Hancock, are you going to stick around for the votes so we can ask questions? You're not going to get off that easy, brother.
Moving on from public comments, we'll go to the oral report. County Executive Elman, do you have a report?
No.
All right. Very good. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is anything to be removed or...
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Okay. Consent agenda has been approved, so we'll move on to Resolution 9-10.
Resolution 19-01, sponsored by Joe Brazel, John White. A resolution opposing unifying the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County into a new form of government, currently referred to as a metropolitan city through constitutional amendment as it would disenfranchise local voters by submitting a purely local matter to a statewide referendum and subjugate the will of the voters in those political subdivisions to the will of the many.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to make some comments, please. As some of the mayors talked, and I've talked to a lot of people about this situation, and I am going to ask Mr. Hancock some questions and Mr. Hildebrand, but this thing, no one in this county is opposed to St. Louis County or St. Louis City improving. I mean, we're all in agreement with that. I've been in St. Louis my whole life. We're all in favor of that. And if it's a good solution for them to merge and come about some of the programs you guys are talking about, that's fine. That's perfectly fine. But the way, what the resolution states is the way they're going about doing it is wrong. They amended it to change the Constitution so it goes to a statewide vote simply because they want to disenfranchise the voters in St. Louis County and St. Louis City, because this thing is so poorly written that they're diluting the vote, and that's exactly what they're doing. This has never been done before. It's wrong. And what we have here is a billionaire who's financing this thing for whatever reasons. I'm sure we could probably figure that out, but is that what we're doing in the state of Missouri? We're just buying amendments and buying ideas and buying mergers and things? It's just wrong. This whole thing is wrong. All the other mayors are here too, and all the other ones in St. Charles County are opposed to it. The mayors in St. Louis City are opposed to it. The St. Louis County councils are opposed to it. This was put together by a bunch of academics that wanted to come up with this idea for their own betterment, probably financial gain and power. This thing is just wrong. So instead of sitting around and complaining about something, it's always best to try to come up with a solution. And some of the things you said are accurate. They're absolutely true. There are too many municipalities, so perhaps if it's 10,000 residents below, you make it go into a quirk of a county. But to take a city like Florissant, who I was a city councilman in a long time ago, my mom still lives there, I know all those people, you got cities like Brentwood, Kirkwood, Webster. So you would basically dismantle those city governments. You would dismantle the mayorship. You'd dismantle the city councils. You would dismantle the local representation of each individual city, and that is 100% wrong, because merging this together is one big conglomerate. It simply isn't going to work. You're breaking down the individualism, and it's wrong. And you're breaking down cities that's been in St. Louis County for over 200 years. So historically, it's incorrect, too. So that's, there's a, why I'm opposed to this Better Together, it's not the idea, it's not what they're trying to do, it's the way they're going about the vote. By going into the state of Missouri, they're diluting the voters in St. Louis County and St. Louis. Now, I talked to the mayor of Chesterfield, Bob Nation. I talked to the mayor of Wildwood, and I talked to the mayor of Ellisville, all three of which are contiguous, if you consider the river a contiguality, which it would if it went Chesterfield down the line, Wildwood, and to Ellisville. If it would mutually benefit both citizens, which it probably would, then all three cities would love to come into St. Charles County, especially if this merger was going to happen. But guess what the Constitution of the state of Missouri says? It says, and you can correct me, John, if I'm wrong here, but it says that if that were true, if Ellisville, Chesterfield, and Wildwood were going to annex into St. Charles County, then it has to go to a vote of all of St. Louis County, and it has to go to a vote all of St. Charles County. Okay, that's good. So why aren't we doing that when it goes the other way? So why aren't we doing that with the city of St. Louis and the city of St. Louis County? The way this is being diluted is a reason, because it would not be passed by the citizens of St. Louis County and the citizens of St. Louis City, because they're disenfranchising their vote, they're taking their way with the power of the people on their vote, and it's wrong. Again, hopefully, there might be other chances where other ideas will come forth that are better, but don't you think if it was really a good, strong idea, all the good things you said, John, about the $40 million influx and all this other stuff, if all these things were so great, then why would you have to reach outside of the actual voters who it's going to affect? Well, there's a reason for that. I mean, unless you're saying that the people in St. Louis County, St. Louis County aren't competent enough to understand what we're doing, or it's just because it's not good enough for them. I mean, it's one or the other. So that's why I think this is a good resolution. It's saying the message. Foreston passed it tonight. University City passed it tonight. St. Louis County Government will be passing this resolution. The whole thing is not, it stinks. It's wrong. And one more thing, there's one person in this room that if, by the law of physics, he is 100% always incorrect, so if you vote the complete opposite, you know you'll be right. Okay? So that's another reason.
You said you had questions for Mr. Hancock.
Oh, yeah. John, do you mind? And I appreciate your Kelly and Hancock on Sundays. I do watch that on TV, so...
I found my ally a little curious this evening as well.
So why, why would you, with the question, how many times has a vote like this went to a statewide vote concerning the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County?
Well, when they, it is in the state Constitution. The separation is in the state Constitution, and if you're going to reform municipalities and police, you can't do it without a statewide vote. Now, in Indianapolis, they did it through the legislature when they unified Indianapolis, but that was a statewide decision. And I would submit that you could tinker around the edges and pass something in the city and county, but it wouldn't achieve what I believe this plan achieves in terms of savings to the taxpayer, reduction of the oppression of government, and saving the state of Missouri from having to bail out a failing city. And, you know, I think for me, the bottom line here, as a St. Charles, if I were a St. Charles County resident, is that if this truly is a way to make St. Louis solvent so that I never have to bail it out, I would want to have a vote on that.
Yeah, but why would you want someone from Poplar Bluff or Joplin to vote on it?
Well, you know, if, to be consistent with this argument, you should vote to allow St. Louis to pass its own gun control laws. You should vote to allow St. Louis to pass its own minimum wage laws. The state of Missouri has decided that was not good public policy. I would submit it's not good public policy here either.
I would beg to differ, because we're talking, those are state laws, but we're talking about like annexation laws. That's like, that's like going to a vote to the state of Missouri for us to annex some other cities or some other, and that's different, because we're talking about annexations, basically.
We're not annexing the city of St. Louis. The city of St. Louis goes poof.
No, but you're talking about local county laws and city laws. We're not talking about state laws, because the gun laws are state laws. So there's a difference there. And so that's why it's highly unusual. The question was, how often have they went outside the city of county for a vote such as this? It's not a state law, but it's a county and city issue. How often have they done that?
Not aware of it.
Okay, so the reason, why would they do this? Why would they go out? You're probably not going to answer this, because I know you work for REX, but so you're, why would you go outside to a statewide vote to dilute the vote?
No. You cannot do what this proposition proposes to do without a statewide vote. The city of St. Louis is a creature of the Missouri Constitution, and as is St. Louis County, a creature of the Constitution. So you can't, and we are creating a new class of counties so that the reforms here will never be used to affect charter counties or second-class counties or third-class counties. And if you're creating a new class of county, that can only be done, and that could be done by the legislature, but it can only be done by a statewide vote, whether that be of the legislature or the voters.
Mr. Watson. You were very creative in writing the resolution, and your opinion, or your legal opinion, could you explain to the council how you came up with the resolution, how you came up with it, where it was going outside the Constitution in order to go to a statewide vote?
Well, two things, I think, consistent with our discussions about the policy around supporting efficient government, local determination on issues. As it relates to the legal issues surrounding this, the one thing that these tend to be, and this is historical, accurate from a historical perspective, is their litigation magnets. And they will attract litigation. I'm certain the Better Together people anticipate that. Most of these types of petition process do so. And so therefore, with the likelihood you're going to have litigation, I've identified the two or three things that most likely, besides challenging the Secretary of State's certification of the language or the auditor's fiscal note, those type of process-type things. But I think this could easily draw litigation, whether it's successful or not. That's what they build courthouses for, anytime that you're diluting a minority vote. And the statistics suggest this could do that. But again, that's one possible litigation issue that might arise, but there will probably be many others along this path.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry you just sat down, John. You can get your steps in tonight, walking back and forth. We just got brand-new carpet, though, so...
It's very nice.
You're not going to wear it out for a while. So correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have a final ballot language done on Better Together, right?
Correct.
So when do you propose that that ballot language is going to be finished?
Well, your counselor is right. It's likely going to be litigated, and, you know, it's hard to say exactly when that final language, I know the auditor's fiscal note is forthcoming, the ballot language then flows, that goes to the Attorney General, and then from there, the Secretary of State will produce ballot language. And now, the petition that we're circulating has been submitted, but the ballot language has not been written.
Do you think it's safe to say it's going to be...
Weeks.
Weeks?
Weeks.
Not months?
I think weeks, yeah. But, I mean, it's government.
Okay. I appreciate it. I don't have any further questions for you, unless, Mr. Cronin? Sorry, John. Old habits die hard.
That's okay, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, John.
You bet.
Mr. Cronin.
I've read this thing very close, and just a little scenario. I've spent my whole life in St. Charles County. My only connections to St. Louis City or County is my grandfather and godfather, both St. Louis City police officers. My youngest son lives across the street from the chess club down in Rex's territory in the Central Orange Ten. That being said, I don't think I should have standing to vote on this. This should be a vote of St. Louis City and St. Louis County independently in results. So that being said, if you read this resolution real carefully, it's not supporting our vote or against Better Together. It's stating that we don't think it's right that the whole state should determine a local issue. And it is a local issue, okay, between St. Louis City and St. Louis County. People in Poplar Bluff or Kirksville or Columbia or Kansas City aren't going to know a darn thing about this anyway. Most voters don't do the research on a subject like this anyway. So that's what this is, and I do support this, simply because I think these folks in St. Louis City and St. Louis County have the right to do their own self-determination, and they should be able to choose their own destiny and not be subject to the voters all over the state.
Your opinion is entirely reasonable. My point is that if St. Louis goes into default, you're going to be right in the middle of it anyway, because you're going to be paying for it.
Isn't that what they say with the bailouts, too, though, with the big motor companies, too?
If you've got any relatives in Grand Rapids or Leland, Michigan, or Traverse City, call them. call them.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
I would just make a couple of comments.
Okay.
John, you're free to sit down after, I know we keep getting you up and down. So Mr. Cronin will tell you that I'm never really a big fan of these kind of resolutions, because I find it ironic that an outside county is going to get involved and tell another county, here's what our opinion is as to what you should do. I know what I would tell St. Louis County if they want to tell St. Charles County what they think we should do, and I don't think they would appreciate my opinion as to what I think their opinion is. So I find it ironic that an outside county is going to tell another body that we don't think it's fair that other people get to decide what you get to do. Then we probably shouldn't weigh in on that then, should we? The other part of the reason why I ask about the ballot language is, this isn't done. So I don't know if I'm for Better Together or not. I've seen it, I've seen parts of it, I don't understand a lot of it. There's a lot of it, as we've learned tonight, that is yet to be decided, it's going to go through the courts pretty much for sure, and we're going to have to figure out what's there. I completely agree with the fact of what our resolution says, that you get better government the closer you get to it. So I appreciate Mr. Jefferson's words, and I, I think that's very good. I think a government that is closest to the people serves the people the best. I completely agree with that. And I don't want the rest of the state of Missouri voting on what's going on in St. Charles County. But I just think this is too early to take a position on pretty much anything. I don't like the rules, the way the rules are, but as Mr. Hancock said, the way that they're trying to put this together, it's got to be a statewide vote, and there's nothing you can do about it. I would much prefer that instant replay, follow-up on the penalties, be able to do instant replay in the NFL, because then the Rams wouldn't have gone to the Super Bowl, the Saints would have. And I would have been much happier if Drew Brees would have played in the Super Bowl than the Rams going. But the rules say that you can't use instant replay for non-calls on penalties. That's just the rules. The way the constitution reads, to Mr. Hancock's point, is if they're going to put this together the way they're trying to put together, and to use your words, it goes poof, then it has to go to a statewide ballot. I don't like that, but the way that we change that is we get the legislature to change that, and that's the only way you're going to get it done. So I would prefer, and I know you differ with me on this one, but I would prefer that we table this resolution until we get a little closer to finding out exactly what's going to happen, because I completely find this resolution unnecessary, because no one cares what we have to say on the other side of the river, and I appreciate what the mayor's council has to say, and if I'm a mayor in St. Louis County, and there's a real good chance that my city's going to go poof, as he so eloquently said, I'm pretty darn happy to say this is a bad idea, because that's going to put me out of a job and it's going to get rid of my city. I completely understand where they're all coming from. So I would ask the council to table this. If you're not going to table it until we get closer to full ballot language that's done, then I would ask to table it until our other two members can be here and we can vote as a full council. So I'm making a motion to table this resolution.
Is there a second on the motion?
I got a comment.
I want a second there.
I'd like to comment on.
Okay, now, there's going to be more discussion.
Mike, what you talked is a cra- they call it a crazy eight. So what you said was, is why are we getting involved in something across the river, right? Isn't that what you said?
I said, I don't think the people who are here are trying to tell them how to do their job.
Right. So funny, how come they're asking everyone across the river to vote on it? I mean, you're, that's a big.
I don't think St. Louis County is asking people across the river to vote on it, I think the Better Together people are asking people to do it.
That's exactly right. So the reason is, is if you think for one minute that we're not part of the region, then you're off your rocker, because we are the St. Louis region. So if St. Louis fails, St. Charles County, Mr. Elman told me, I talked to him about this, he made a great point, he didn't comment on this particular issue, but he said was, if someone's searching, if Google or Amazon or one of these big companies is going to do a region search, they're going to look at St. Louis first.
Right.
Okay? And I never looked at it this way, and he's 100% right. So if St. Louis is dysfunctional, not doing well, they're not going to come to St. Charles County. They'll come to St. Louis if it's good, and then they'll look at the surrounding area for a second, whether or not where that factory or whatever's going to go. So it is our issue. And when, I hate to tell you this, Mike, but when you run for county council in an election, you are a leader, you do get involved in region issues. Why are you, why would we even have the ECC? Why would we have the Economic Council that involves St. Louis everything? So your argument is really bad, okay? So we are involved in this.
I appreciate the fact that you don't like my argument.
No.
And it's your resolution, I wouldn't expect you to agree.
Well, you never agree with me, and it doesn't matter what it is, you're going to go on the complete opposite every time I say something. So, I mean, this, so let's have this circus, we will, this will be fun, that's what you want to do. But the idea is, is we're not talking about whatever Mr. Hancock comes back with on their, on their Rex Seinfeld, or Squinfield, or whatever the hell his name is, comes back with that, his, his, the language, it's the content of how we're voting on it, it doesn't matter what it says, it's saying that we're disenfranchising the voters of St. Louis and St. Louis County. That's what it says. So it doesn't matter if they're going to give, put a chicken in everybody's refrigerator and buy everyone a car, it doesn't matter. It's just that the way they're going about it is wrong, and that's what it is. And yes, you do get involved, if somebody is mistreating your neighbor and you do nothing about it, soon it's going to be you that's mistreated, and that's, that's the way it works in this world, okay? So shame on you for not thinking it's not our part, our problem, it is.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry that you just said shame on me, that's a shame that you would feel that way, but there are different options that could come up here, if they.
Yeah, go ahead.
Free, go ahead.
No.
If they decide to come up with.
If you, you had all this time.
So you aren't done, okay.
No, you, you could have called me, you could, did you talk to any of your mayors? Did you talk to any of them? I mean, this is your great idea, you could have said something. I mean, it's just funny to me that you're going to be in a post or anything.
So, so to that point, Mr. Brazel, did you ever call me about this? Did you ever talk to me about this? Did we ever have any discussions about this resolution before tonight?
No, but I know that.
Okay, so you didn't ask my opinion on it, you didn't ask my input on it, but you put it on the agenda, and, and here we sit. So we're going to take a position.
I talked to these four people.
And once you had your four, you were done, so you figure, well, just, we don't really care what Mike Elam has to say, so here we go.
Because I knew you'd be opposed. I told them.
So can I finish the point that I was trying to make before you call the question?
I told Mr. Vagant you were going to oppose this.
Thanks. So the point that, the point that I was going to make is, if this gets, if they go down the road with this a little further, and they do a board, a board of freeholders, then it takes care of itself. John, correct me if I'm wrong, but at that point, it's going to be voted on by St. Louis City and St. Louis County only, and it wouldn't be a statewide issue, because they would do it differently.
Any proposal of a board of freeholders would be limited to St. Louis City and County, but it would also be limited in its scope of what they could do.
So my point is, this isn't done on what they're going to do. So there could be an alternative idea that comes about, and that alternative idea could make all of this that we just talked about, and our lovely discussion, and shame on me comments, would be completely unnecessary, and we just chased our tail and took a position on something, it didn't happen.
So while.
All I'm asking is, could we wait until there's actually something that they've decided they're going to move forward with, and then we take a position on something? But obviously, it looks like I'm the only one who feels that way, so I would call the question and save Mr. Cronin from having to do it.
Okay, okay.
It's going to be a circus if you want to do that.
We have, we have a motion on the floor.
And a second.
There's a first and a second, so we need to vote on the motion.
And the motion is to table this resolution, correct?
That's correct.
It is.
Let me weigh in here, which I have not done so far. I think if we table this resolution, number one, it will give us the two members that are absent an opportunity. If this resolution passes, I would much rather it be a seven-to-zero vote than what it appears to be, you know, a four-to-one vote right now.
Right.
I think that looks a whole lot better for us. I think that we, as a county, look united, and if this thing is tabled, it doesn't mean that Mr. Elam is going to vote against this resolution. I think what it means is that he is, like the rest of us, going to have an opportunity to discuss it a little bit more, also give an opportunity for our other two members that are absent to, to weigh in on the subject.
Correct.
So, you know, my, my point is that, and as Mr. Hancock said, this, this issue is going to the courts, we're weeks down the road, and if, not months, but at least weeks down the road, and I think we, as a group, are probably going to meet at least two and maybe three more times before the Better Together folks get this all settled. So, you know, I see no problem at all with tabling the resolution. By me voting to table it, I'm certainly not saying I am voting no against the resolution at all, you know? All I know is that the first couple of words of this, opposing unifying the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County into a new form of government, okay? You know, and I, I know it goes further, and I, I, I understand Mr. Brazel's point of view, and I agree with you on the statewide thing. I think that's, it really does sound to be pretty ludicrous, all right? But I, I do believe by, by delaying this, it will hurt nothing whatsoever, and give our other two members an opportunity to vote, and I'd much rather see this resolution passed as a seven-to-zero vote than, you know, four-to-one.
Any other questions?
Well, I don't think it's going to be, it'll be a six-to-one, it won't be a seven-to-one, or seven-zero, but.
All right, so, so.
My question is to.
You can't know that.
Can I ask John a question? Is this a simple majority, or does it take four, or what?
I believe it takes a constitutional majority, four.
You know, as chair and as sponsor, co-sponsor of this bill, I agree with all the discussions that we've had tonight, and I do believe that it would be fair if we would table the bill. I don't see what it's going to harm if we do table it, Joe. We've already put it out there, so the public knows that we have a resolution and how we feel about it. I think it's fair to the rest of the council if we do table the bill and give it a little more time to breathe. So as probably the swing vote on this, I'm going to call for the question, and I will vote to table.
I, I, okay, I agree with that. Can I ask Mr. Hancock a question, though, so we can get an idea what, what kind of timeframe?
Yes, Mr. Hancock.
What, John, what, what are you saying? Are you saying?
Will you come to the podium so everybody can see you?
You saying April sometime, or?
You know, it's impossible, and your counselor may have a better handle on that than I do, but my sense is, the auditor's got a fiscal note that should be coming out next week-ish, then it goes to the Attorney General's office, they will, what, do they bless the fiscal note?
They approve both the language and the fiscal notice to form only.
Right, and then, and then, and then you'll have the language that'll come out of the Secretary of State's office. My best guess is that you're weeks away, maybe a month, maybe six weeks, I, you know, it's a guess.
What would be a reasonable, I mean, so, I mean, because.
I'd be happy to come back.
We're going to have you back, because it's going to be fun, all right?
Yeah.
I mean, seriously.
I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Cronin?
What you said, about using the freeholders, it limits the scope. I'm going to tell you this to give you an opportunity to prepare when you come back again. Why would you not go ahead and do this with freeholders and let the people of St. Louis City and County weigh in, even if it limits the scope? And if the, if this experiment is successful, you can expand the scope later with a, with a statewide vote. You don't have to answer that now, but I'd just like.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to. I, I believe that the problems besetting St. Louis today are so substantial and significant that anything short of a complete reform is not going to get the job done. That's my opinion.
Can you, would you, down the road, tell us what the limitations are by doing it with the freeholders?
I'd have to do some research, but I could, I could do that.
And the other comment is, I'd like, I support table this, because I really like seeing all the mayors in the county, and we want to see you guys come more often, so let's table this a bunch so we can kind of get the response back from the mayors. Good to see you guys.
I think we're only a couple of aldermen away from having a full St. Peters meeting. So there we go.
John, so back to this, what you guys are wanting to do, so could we have a, a second option to, for St. Charles County on this statewide vote to annex in Chesterfield, Wildwood, and Ellisville?
That's up to you all.
I mean, why not? It's only fair.
As a resident of Chesterfield, you know, it wouldn't be all bad, I could vote for, I could vote for you guys then.
Some of us at least, correct?
Yeah.
I have, I have one question for Mr. Hillebrand.
Who has a great website, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my website is betterinstcharlescounty.com, and I, and I put all the statistics of why Wildwood and Chesterfield would be better in St. Charles County.
That was my question, thank you.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
But Brad, you know, I called up the mayors and talked to them about that, and it's, it's, they would consider it, absolutely, and Ellisville could tag along, too, because they're all right there in that strip. But it, it would have, it has to go a vote of St. Louis County and St. Charles County. I think St. Charles County voters would pass it, but I don't think St. Louis, because the numbers don't, it was, what was it? John Lampin was actually going to come tonight, and he helped kind of work with this with me and with John, and he was, he was the mayor of Chesterfield, or not the mayor, senator over in that area, I'm sorry, and he served with Steve, and he's smart, he knows his stuff, and, but the problem is the numbers don't work for, if it had to go to St. Louis County, you know, you got, let's say, so many people in Chesterfield, so many people in Wildwood, and so many people in Ellisville, they want to have a majority to get that to, that, they just want it to swing that way.
Well, I think that what you're saying is probably true, but I think that what Mr., Mr., Hancock?
Yes.
Mr. Hancock's saying, there are a lot of smart people here in St. Charles County, and I think that we could all come up with some kind of a provision, if they can take this to the state and put it to statewide vote, why can't we in St. Charles County come up with some kind of idea where we'd be able to bypass that, or essentially change the law where we wouldn't necessarily have to have that done?
I'd love to do that if it's possible.
One comment, if we're seriously going to talk about this down the road, we have our finance director here sitting over there scratching his head, probably wondering the numbers in his head right now, but I'd also, we, we also could ask our auditor, okay? I'd be curious to see what the expected revenue projections would be from these cities that we're talking about, versus what the, what the expected expenses were to provide the same service levels that we provide to our own residents into Chesterfield, Ellisville, and Wildwood. So those are numbers we'd have to see.
And keep in mind, Chesterfield is already dissatisfied with the tax pool issue they have, and that's what Mayor Nation is always complaining about, is that for every dollar they put into the pool, I think it's currently 65 cents, is that correct? Would you know that number? So essentially, what's happening is, the money that's being generated by Chesterfield is going elsewhere in St. Louis County, and quite honestly, one of the other things is, especially the people who live along the Highway 40 corridor in St. Charles County, we already put a lot of money into St. Louis County right now. There's tons of people that use the, all the, the services and the retail places in, in Chesterfield Valley, and not only that, we have a very nice functional mall, and they don't.
All right, all right.
In St. Peters, I believe.
Yes, St. Peters, St. Peter. Beautiful mall, and there's hardly any vacancies in it, and if you've walked through Chesterfield Mall, hello, 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 hello.
All right.
Thanks, Brad, thanks.
Well, my question went a long ways, thank you.
So, John, do we set this for the second meeting in April?
No, no, we, we have a question on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Whether or not it's done.
Is it a roll-call vote or a voice vote?
It's a voice vote.
Okay. The question is to table Resolution Number 1901. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay, one no. Okay. The resolution has been tabled. Moving on to our agenda, we'll move on to bills for final passage with Bill Number 4684.
Bill Number 4684, an ordinance enabling St. Charles County, Missouri to join Show Me Pace pursuant to state statute and stating the terms under which the county will conduct activities as a member of such district.
Is there a motion to... This is discussion. Yes.
Before everybody leaves, let me suggest that, you know, the one thing that I think all of us agree on is something needs to be done, that things aren't working over there. I wish that they would, when they come up with this whole plan, would have looked out here and seen some of the things we do in St. Charles County. We've got some mayors here, and what I think is special about St. Charles County is, we got five major cities and a couple more that may become major cities someday. They're big enough to do the job that a city should do. I can't imagine 91 municipalities in St. Charles County and us operate that way. Now, they have three times as many people, so maybe they should have 15. But the problem, of course, is they got 91. And again, if they're looking for a model on how to fix it over there, I think they could look out here and see a pretty good example.
We agree. And thank you all for coming.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend Bill Number 4684 and replace it with Substitute Bill 4684.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of amending the bill?
Aye.
Aye. It's been amended, so...
Anybody opposed?
Nobody opposed.
Okay.
So, read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number 4684, an ordinance enabling St. Charles County, Missouri to join Show Me Pace pursuant to state statute and stating the terms under which the county will conduct activities as a member of such district.
Any questions or comments on the substitute bill?
I just... Oh, I just got one comment. I'm not in favor or opposed to this bill. The only reason that I support it is it just gives... There's another one similar to it. I don't even know the name of it, that has a similar kind of co-op purchasing program. So, this is just creating a competition. That's the only reason I support it. Whether or not it's a good thing or a bad thing, I don't know, but buyer beware. People have to be smart. When they buy something, they got to understand what they're buying. Simple as that.
Mr. Cronin, you have a comment?
Yes, the substitute was... The reason for the substitute, Mr. Watson and I had a discussion, and the existing and previous bill that we had did not have penalties for failure to take care of the consumer protections that were within the bill. So, Mr. Watson very skillfully combined state statutes with normal commerce into this bill. So, it gives us a right, if there's a problem with one of these pace providers down the road, we have a way under state statute now to get them to comply with what we want to do. So, he did a good job on this, and just echo what Mr. Brazel said, is this just gives our residents another option, another competing company to try to get a good deal on a new home, our new financing for a new furnace, or roof, or windows, or siding for their home. So, I think it's a good thing for everybody.
All right. Very good. Anybody else? Then call a question.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?